A long time ago. In fact, it's aging me as we speak, both of us. And the result is, we were doing free work for seniors. And when you start doing benefits and you start asking questions and you're trying to feed somebody and you're trying to get housing for somebody, you find out there are programs out there that most people don't ask about.
Yes.
And then you try to make those programs available. The problem is, long-term care Medicare is still a pretty well-kept secret. Seniors don't know this. In fact, it's excellent that you're asking these questions because hopefully these seniors will find out. They don't need lawyers. A lot of these seniors will qualify just because they fit within the parameters.
They're in the profile. I got you.
But sometimes you'll get a senior with a house and they may have a house up in Big Bear that they have had for years.
Right. And they're fearful of losing it.
And while they're fearful of losing it, they're thinking, gee, I have a house and I have a house in Big Bear, so I'm not going to qualify. Because he said, they can have a house and they can have $140,000. Well, there are all kinds of exclusions, exemptions, plans that you can do within the federal government that will accept that piece of property and still get benefits. So the government is not intolerable. It's just that it's not user-friendly and people don't know.
But I always hope that people will plan a little bit better than coming to a moment of crisis when decisions have to be made. Is this something that someone in, say, their mid-40s who may be providing care for a parent should be thinking about? Like, let me see what the eligibility is here and what the next steps are?
I'd like to say yes, but the answer is no. And here's why. A lot of this estate planning stuff, a lot of these lawyers that are doing all these sophisticated plans and trusts and wills and all that. You have to know who's going to get sick. And the problem with that is, if you're shifting to the right because you think mom's going to get sick, you can be surprised, find out the dad goes first and everything you shifted in the wrong direction now is locked into play. So what we suggest is, until you have a pretty good indicator, until you know where the problems are going to be, you want to leave things broad. You want powers of attorney for health care, powers of attorney for finance. You want to have simple wills or trusts in place so that things can move in either direction without necessarily locking yourself in. So as much as I'd like to see a plethora of people coming in and talking to us, it won't do them any good until we really know which direction we're going in.
Okay. Well, let's talk about a plethora of people coming in. We have some numbers, contact numbers, so people can access your services, but also Nursing Home Solutions, the company they're president of. So I want to get them up on the screen if we could. So those of you at home will know what to do and who to write to. Here's the 800 number. And what is that number again, Zorn?
1-800-7-SENIOR.
Oh, that's too easy. 1-800-7-SENIOR. And there's a website, I assume?
That's right. And it's www.nhscare.com.
Nursing Home Solutions Care. Let me ask this question. How are we doing in terms of administrative costs? A lot of people knock Medicare and Medicare, but it seems to me they got pretty low overhead compared to the private sector.
If you ever sat down and you figured out what a person who works 50 years pays into the system in terms of taxes for benefits, and if you then put an interest component to that and you ran it for the 50 years, you'd find the vast majority of us never utilize what's already been paid for us, let alone what's available. So this is kind of a shell game, if you will. But most seniors are not taking advantage of the dollars they have available to them. If I can put a warning out while we're talking.
Please.
A lot of seniors are getting reverse mortgages, which can be a very good tool if they have funds, they need funds, they have a house, it's pregnant with value. But they have to be very careful because these reverse mortgages have a clause in them that'll say, if you end up unable to live in your home because you break a hip, you end up with dementia, and you have to go into a nursing home, that loan will come due if you can't stay home for 12 months or longer. So the end result is, a lot of these loans that these seniors are getting to enable them to stay home can actually trigger the loss of the house. And here's the exact scenario. You get a senior who brings his children home to live with them, to take care of him or her, so they can stay home. And they borrow these dollars out of a reverse mortgage, so these dollars will help support them. And then something terrible happens where they are hospitalized and they can't come home for a year. At the end of that year, the house might be gone.
Might be gone entirely.
And now the support mechanism, the kids you needed to be there aren't living there because the house is gone, you have no way to go home. And that's a disaster.
Of course, it would be.
So just a warning to them to look very closely before they take that step.
You mentioned, you put a dollar amount, you can have like a million dollars in assets and still qualify. But is there a cap? Is there someplace beyond which you can't go?
Well, if you have a four or five million dollar estate, you don't need the federal government. You know, you've got enough money, you're generating, you're fine. But the average US citizen, the average middle-class American's got a house worth five, six hundred thousand. Used to be worth seven or eight. Now maybe down to three. But they have some savings. They've worked hard. You know, everybody is proud of what they've done. And most seniors want to leave something to their kids.
Absolutely. That's part of the whole planning process.
Part of the American dream. And so, no, they're middle-class families. They really are, middle-class families. There's no abuse in the system.
Zorn, it's been a treat to talk to you.
Appreciate it.
And I'm feeling much more hopeful. And thanks to our guest in the first half of our program, Zoran Basic. But it's now time for a short break. And when we return, we will resume our discussion of Medicare, Medicaid, and Medicare. We'll be right back.
The Los Angeles Department of Water and Power wants to give you up to seven free shade trees, just for completing a workshop, either online or in your neighborhood. The Trees for a Green L.A. program offers LADWP residents over 40 different varieties of free shade trees. Trees benefit the environment, save energy, and add beauty. Get your trees by participating in an online workshop by logging on to ladwp.com/trees or call 1-800-GREEN-L-A.
It's fun to be a good neighbor. So say hi to your new neighbors at the L.A. Zoo. And bring Grandpa. They've got a walking buddy for him, too. They've expanded, so there's even more to see and do. Don't wonder who's here, because just for kicks, they've got birds on sticks. Whatever you do, make sure Mom and Dad come early, because they're certainly ready to say hi to you. And this invitation comes from your good neighbors here at the L.A. Zoo.
Welcome back to Aging in L.A. Our topic today is the meta-mix-up. And we are discussing Medicare, Medicaid, and Medicare. The differences among them and how seniors can use their benefits. Joining us in the second half of the show is Eileen Harper, Executive Director of the Center for Healthcare Rights, a nonprofit healthcare advocacy organization dedicated to assuring consumer access to quality health care. Eileen, thank you so much for joining us today. Now, you've brought some important information that our viewers need to know. For example, there are some changes in the legislation for Medicare now, right? And is that going to impact a lot of people?
Well, basically, the most recent Medicare legislation did result in some changes in the program. Nothing, you know, on a huge, major scale. Probably the most important is an actual expansion of the Medicare coverage for mental health.
An expansion of it?
Well, expansion in that the, right now, the way the program works is that there is really significant cost sharing when people use the mental health benefit. Medicare only pays about 62.5% in terms of the bills. So by reducing the cost sharing over a several-year period, what will happen is that Medicare beneficiaries will have much better access to mental health coverage than they had previously.
That's the good news. Because so many of these changes are alarming to our senior citizens. The moment they hear change, it's, oh, I'm dependent on those benefits.
Right.
Is there an outreach program? Or in fact, are you doing that to try to reach out into the community and help people understand some of the subtle differences?
Right. Well, what our program does, Center for Healthcare Rights, is we provide Medicare advocacy and health insurance counseling services here in the L.A. area. We're funded by the City Department of Aging. And we're also funded by the L.A. County Area Agency on Aging. We have a telephone hotline that people can call us. I believe we're going to show it today.
Right. In fact, we'll put it up now. It's an 800 number, so there's no cost to this.
People can call us Monday through Friday and basically ask us any questions relating to Medicare. We also try to make sure that we provide services in other languages because we have a very multicultural population here in L.A.
Boy, do we ever.
So we try to do, work hard to make sure that our services are available in other languages for many Medicare beneficiaries who don't speak English. One of the things that we've been doing the last couple of months is actually running public service announcements on a variety of television stations to try to encourage people, older adults, who are family members, to contact us if they have questions or problems relating to their Medicare.
Now, I think one of the most amazing things to me as I walk through the various communities in Los Angeles is, how many people who are dealing with senior issues think they're all alone?
Oh, of course.
And they're not. I mean, the statistic you provided us with, there are, what, a million persons?
There's a million Medicare beneficiaries in L.A. County, yes.
That's a staggering number.
Yeah. You really are, you've really sort of hit it on the head. I think a lot of families, until it happens to them in terms of dealing with Medicare or dealing with, let's say, a medical situation, or mom's in the hospital, mom has to go to a nursing home, really, it's families, that's the first time they're really dealing with Medicare directly. And Medicare, as you know, is not comprehensive. There's lots of gaps in coverage. One of the main gaps is that Medicare does not pay for custodial care in a nursing home. So I think at that point, a lot of families sort of are scrambling, trying to get information in terms of, what are our next steps? How do we plan for the future? How do we deal with today?
Right. And that's in addition to dealing with the emotional impact of having a senior loved one suddenly unable to care for themselves or needing special care. I know, I was amazed when I saw within the Department of Aging, both city and county, how many people there are to help you. They are experienced, they are sympathetic, and they just, they possess so much information. Programs that you never dreamed existed, and yet here are trained professionals ready to help you. Now, for example, the ombudsman thing, I always thought that was one of the great programs that was instituted for people who have issues with nursing homes and assisted living. That there's actually a person who will be your champion.
Right, right. In a nursing home setting or in a residential care, right? Well, I mean, our organization does something similar, but we're focusing on healthcare access. We're focusing on, what do you do when you're having a Medicare problem? What do you do if your Medicare HMO isn't providing the services that you believe you should be getting? What happens when the hospital tells you you need to go home and you believe that you really are not well enough to go home? You know, what are your rights? And those are the kinds of things that we can respond to if people contact us.
Yeah, because so often, I've had people complain to me, they feel like they're being kicked out of the hospital like they need the bed.
Well, that's because of the way Medicare pays for hospital services. I mean, I think your previous guest was talking about the, you know, typical stay in a hospital right now is about four or five days, which is true. And I think a lot of older adults and some family members think, well, Mom will stay in the hospital until she needs to go home. And frequently, that's not the case. She'll stay as long as she needs in acute care stay, and then basically she'll be discharged either to go home or to go to a nursing home or another type of level of care.
Right. And so often, say there's been a fall, broken hip, as Zorn was mentioning, suddenly you are going through a step-by-step process from the hospital to rehabilitation and then to assisted living, and you never get a chance to get a hold of it. But what's happening to you? Who's going to pay for all of this?
Well, I mean, I think a lot of families, unfortunately, are getting those answers. I mean, for example, if they contact us, they're getting those answers, but unfortunately, they're not getting them in a planning period. They're getting them in a crisis situation. So they're sort of dealing with a lot of dynamics. They're dealing with sort of the emotional situation, they're dealing with having to sort of organize everything in a very, very quick manner.
Speaking of planning period, you alerted us to the fact that the next Medicare Part D, which is the prescription drug access, the enrollment period opens up again.
That's right, November 15th.
November 15th, 2008. So what steps do people need to make sure that they'll get this coverage?
Well, I think most people who are already participating in the program essentially sort of have sort of gotten their feet wet over the last two and a half years in terms of becoming familiar with it. I think in terms of planning for what to do next is that, I think everyone who is, who wants to participate in the program, what they should do is go, if they have internet access, is they should go to the Medicare website in November to sort of take a look at the information on the plans for 2009. If they think they want to stay with their current plan, they should make sure that their medications are still in the formulary for next year. And they also should check to see what their cost sharing will be for the coming year as well. I mean, one common question that we frequently get from Medicare beneficiaries is, coverage in the coverage gap or donut hole?
Right. That donut hole.
And so for people who have very high prescription drug costs, who take lots of brand-new medications, that would probably be something that they would want to check on. Now, only 20% of the Medicare population gets on the internet. So for those people who don't have internet access, they should probably give us a call starting in early November. And what we can do is, we can help them identify maybe two, three plans that may be most appropriate for their medical needs, and then they can decide which one to enroll in.
I see. But this is particularly important if you're walking into the pharmacy and suddenly getting a $450 bill.
Well, also, the enrollment period is very short. It's November 15th through the end of December. So they don't want to wait until, you know, close to the...
Last second.
Exactly.
Okay, so you heard that. Now, there is just six weeks here, November 15th to the end of the year, where this enrollment period is open again. Now, how long does that extend, the enrollment period? Is it for the full calendar year?
Well, basically, this is the annual election period. So for many Medicare beneficiaries, this is the time when they, if they want to make a change, they make the change. Now, if someone is in a Medicare Advantage plan, let's say a Medicare HMO or PPO, they have an additional three months, January through March. Now, people who have Medicare and Medicare, they can change their plan monthly. So the people who really need to focus on this November through December period are people primarily who have Medicare, they're not eligible for Medicare, they're not in a Medicare HMO. This is their opportunity to make the change.
All right. Now, you've been warned. Unfortunately, Eileen, our time is up for today's Aging in L.A. But thanks so much to our guests on today's program. Eileen Harper, who gave you great information, Executive Director of the Center for Healthcare Rights. And in the first half of the program, Zoran Basic, President of Nursing Home Services. Now, it's time for our feature, Senior Stat Shots. And once again, we found today's statistics in the recently released L.A. County Seniors' Count, a survey of the older adult population in Los Angeles City and County. Now, since we talked about federal and state benefits for seniors in our program today, let's take a look at statistics that reflect how seniors are covered by insurance, both public and private. 70% of seniors living in L.A. County have medical insurance. 39% have dental insurance. 53% have prescription drug insurance. And 37% belong to an HMO. 10% of the survey did not respond to this question. And when asked what they are unable to afford in their present circumstances, 9% said they cannot afford medical care, 18% they couldn't afford dental care, 9% cannot afford prescription drugs, 13% couldn't afford vision care, and 11% cannot afford hearing care. 55% of the respondents were able to afford all of these medical needs, and 15% of those surveyed had no response at all. And that's today's Senior Stat Shots. You can get your own copy of this fact-filled survey by simply going online to www.ladss.org, which is Los Angeles County Community and Senior Services. Click on L.A. County Seniors' Count, and the full report will appear. Or if you like, you can have a copy mailed to you by calling area code 213-738-2065. The Los Angeles Department of Aging produces this program with City View, Channel 35, so that seniors living in Los Angeles and surrounding communities are well-informed on the many issues that face them in everyday life. And also to let you know of the many services that the Department of Aging offers our senior citizens. Now, we'd like to hear from you with comments on the program, what you like, what you think can be improved, and ideas for future programs. So please give us a call. The number's there on your screen, area 213-252-4088. That's 213-252-4088. Call us with your comments and ideas, and we look forward to hearing from you. I'm Paul Peterson for the Los Angeles Department of Aging, the people here at City View, Channel 35, and all of our guests on Aging in L.A. Thanks so much for watching. We'll see you next time.
Hi, I'm Kevin from Jasper. I've been your taste in New Orleans since 1986. You're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
Good morning. It is Friday, February 18th. This is Live. Cut. All right, good morning, Los Angeles. It's Friday, February 18th. This will be a meeting of Los Angeles City Council. We have with us, thank you, councilmembers, Cartonus, Weezer, Corretts, LeBonge, Parks, Perry, Councilman Bresin, and Councilman Garcetti. We need 10 to begin our meeting for the formal quorum. We will begin with our presentations, and our first presentation for today will be Council District 5. CD5, Mr. Corretts, you have the floor. And chambers, can you please quiet down? Thank you. We are now moving forward. Mr. Corretts.
Well, thank you, colleagues. I am absolutely delighted to be honoring Vidal Sassoon, who is here today with his lovely wife, Ronnie. Vidal has led an extraordinary life and has had an equally extraordinary effect on the world. We know mostly through his legendary career in the world of hairstyling, and certainly has created famous haircuts for numerous celebrities. Many of us still remember how he chopped Mia Farrow's fabled long hair before she made the movie Rosemary's Baby. The cameras were rolling, and the world looked on with fascination. But he's also changed how countless people, especially women, look and how they feel about themselves with exciting hairstyles that don't demand endless care. And he has been an important supporter and champion of many humanitarian and artistic causes, including here in Los Angeles. He is one of those people who has transformed our culture through his intense creativity, brilliant business acumen, and many good deeds. So first, let me point out that Vidal Sassoon spent years of his childhood in an orphanage and grew up in poverty, as well as in the midst of war. He survived the bombs of the London Blitz, even while apprenticing to learn the tools of his trade that he would eventually master. Feisty and defiant, he joined the British anti-fascist organization and eventually fought in Israel's War of Independence. So we can look at what he endured and also what he became. He's a grand living symbol of how people can emerge from despairing circumstances and instead of turning their back on the world, can conquer it with their talent, vision, and courage. Certainly, the looks he created through his hairstyings have changed how we see people's face and body structures. But Vidal has also revolutionized our very culture precisely because his wash-and-wear hair approach changed personal style forever, enabling people, and especially women, to live their lives without devoting overwhelming time and energy to hair care. He's also championed numerous social and charitable causes. He spearheaded a campaign, Hairdressers Unlocking Hope, that raised millions of dollars to help build many homes in the New Orleans area after Hurricane Katrina. He's also provided aid for the elderly and medical care for the underprivileged. He has been a staunch advocate for the arts, helping to mount a ballet for the Dance Theater of Harlem, promoting educational programs at museums and other cultural institutions, including the Geffen Playhouse in my district in Westwood. He's never lost his fierce sense of justice, which is why in 1982, he founded the Vidal Sassoon International Center for the Study of Anti-Semitism and Related Bigotries at the Hebrew University in Jerusalem. Vidal was also the subject of a new movie and much acclaimed documentary film called Vidal Sassoon in the Movie, which tells his life story while covering his remarkable seven decades of a career as a worldwide figure, as a great hairdresser, and a life and career we today celebrate, not just because of his work, but his longstanding commitment to helping others. So before I present this
It's an international celebrity, really.
Proclamation, I'd like to introduce Craig Tepper and ask him to show this brief clip.
Famous for creating the shape, the five-point, the bob, and the many, many more.
I spent from five to eleven in the orphanage. Being Jewish, we stood out in those days. If I was going to be in hairdressing, I wanted to change things.
You sat there, you teased it, and if you didn't save for a week, you were in big trouble.
I wanted to eliminate the superfluous and get down to the basic angles of cut and shape.
Women deliberated, very particularly through their haircuts.
He's revolutionized not just hair, but fashion.
Do you always insist on giving people what you think's right rather than what they ask for?
Vidal made everybody nervous. He was crazy.
Actually did once throw my scissors in the air and they stuck in the ceiling.
When everybody tells you, the doubters tell you, "Can't be done," nonsense. If you can get to the root of who you are and make something happen from it, my sense is you're going to surprise yourself.
He was a hairdresser who had a huge influence on our whole visual world.
And so, without further ado, I'd like to present this commendation declaring this day in Los Angeles as Vidal Sassoon Day.
Mr. Labonge, Mr. Labonge.
Thank you very much. Mr. President, nice to see you. Mr. Coretts, thank you for bringing such an iconic individual who with the scissors, with the scissors, that he made beauty for many people and inspired people, which is so special. As we, in our world, and I was thinking, Mr. Sassoon, I know you live up in the Mahaloan area, that name is very iconic to Southern California, Los Angeles, and the history and water. And your name is iconic with beauty and self-esteem and joy and love and history and art and everything, not just in Southern California and around the world. Mr. Coretts, it's so wonderful that you bring your constituent here of such high note to be honored by the City Council. We congratulate you. I only wish my wife was here because she would ask you what I should do with my hair. But anyway, thank you very much. Congratulations, Mr. Sassoon.
Thank you, indeed. Say a few words. I'd love to say a few words. Thank you to Councilman Coretts, you're most kind. And I want to go back to my stories with this organization. First of all, Michael Newton, he's around the Music Center, the taper forum, and for Mrs. Chandler. And when you got a call from Michael Newton, you knew that Mrs. Chandler was ready for you. So we had lunch, and suddenly she was Buffy. Suddenly she was Buffy Chandler as the check was passed over. And this is marvelous because she did this with so many people, one of the great ladies of Los Angeles, who created a wonderful sense of getting together, being aware of one another. And I think we owe her a lot, it's just one story. The second, I was a great Bradley fan. And yeah, Ned Bradley was just something special. And we went up to San Francisco with him on a fundraiser. You're never going to believe this. A cop stopped the car and looked inside, quizzically, didn't recognize anybody, gave the driver a ticket, God knows what for, but what I'm really trying to say, of course, we all got back safely to Los Angeles, but what I'm really trying to say is, there was an involvement. And I'm accepting this because I was involved. Zebi Maitre and the orchestra, very involved with them, and it was always exciting times. And I thank you for the honor very much indeed. Glad that my wife, Ronnie, and I guess that we just moved into the area, haven't we? We were in Beverly Hills, we're not now. And nothing more to say, just to say that there was a deep involvement, and I guess still is. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next presentation, Councilmember Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, today we're going to do a dual presentation. One of the things, I just recently, Sunday, had the opportunity to go to the Founder's Day Ceremony at First AME about the founding of the AME Church, but also I'm joined by Jan Perry because she's going to assist me in providing a resolution to Pastor John Hunter, I'll ask him to come up, and his wife, the First Lady of First AME, Denise Hunter. But to put the presentation and the resolution today in context, I just want to briefly comment on the whole issue of the African Methodist Episcopal Church. It grew out of a Free African Society, which Richard Allen, Absalon Jones, and others established in Philadelphia in 1787, when officials at the St. George Methodist Episcopal Church pulled blacks off their feet while praying. The Free African Society members discovered just how far American Methodists would go to enforce racial discrimination against African Americans. Hence, these members of St. George made plans to transform Mutual Aid Society into African congregation. Although most wanted to affiliate with the Protestant Episcopal Church, Allen led a small group who resolved to remain Methodist. In 1794, Bethel AME was dedicated with Allen as pastor. To establish Bethel's independence from interfering white Methodists, Allen, a former Delaware slave, successfully sued in the Pennsylvania courts in 1807 and in 1815 for the right of his congregation to exist as an independent institution. Because black Methodists and other Middle Atlantic communities encountered racism and desired religious autonomy, Allen called them to meet in Philadelphia to form a new Wesleyan denomination, the AME. The geographic spread of the AMEC prior to the Civil War was mainly restricted to the Northeast and Midwest. Major congregations were established in Philadelphia, New York, Boston, Pittsburgh, Baltimore, Washington, D.C., Cincinnati, Chicago, Detroit, and other large blacksmiths shop cities. Numerous northern communities also gained substantial AME presence. Remarkably, the slave states of Maryland, Kentucky, Missouri, Louisiana, and a few years later, South Carolina became additional locations for the AME congregation. The denomination spread and reached the Pacific Coast in the early 1850s with churches in Mother Bethel Church, Stockton, Sacramento, San Francisco, and other places in California. Moreover, Bishop Marsh Brown established the Canadian Annual Conference. With Adam as, Ms. Perry to talk about why we're here is to honor a major birthday for the oldest black church in the city of Los Angeles, and that's why our pastor and First Lady are here.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parks. This is a great, great opportunity for me to learn more about my own city. I actually participated in the quasi-centennial celebration over at Second Baptist Church, and now that I find that First AME is even older, it's an inspiration. We're here to honor First AME, or First African Methodist Episcopal Church in Los Angeles, or Fame, as it is called, as the oldest church founded by African Americans in the city of Los Angeles. Now, Fame was built on the foundation laid by Bishop Richard Allen, as Mr. Parks said. Fame Church, our church, finds joy in being the first to serve. Worship at Fame is a dynamic and joyful experience, and its nationally acclaimed music department provides anointed music and praise from at least one of its seven choirs at each worship service. On November 11th, 2004, Reverend Dr. John J. Hunter, known affectionately as Pastor John, was appointed to serve as Fame's senior minister. Since his arrival at Fame, more than 3,000 people have united with the church and have become active members. Reverend Hunter was born in Gary, Indiana, and moved to Detroit, Michigan as a teenager. He joined St. Stephen AME Church where his father, the late Johnny Hunter, served as pastor until his election as the 101st bishop of the AME Church. He's a graduate of Morehouse College, the Boston University School of Law, Princeton Theological Seminary, and the University of Missouri at Kansas City, where he has a J.D., a Master's in Divinity, and a Master's in Business Administration, along with his Bachelor's of Arts from Morehouse. He has pastored congregations in Detroit, New Jersey, Wichita, Kansas, Kansas City, Missouri, and Seattle. Reverend Hunter is happily married to Denise Hunter, who serves as the president and chief operating officer of First AME's corporate ministries. And the Hunters are blessed with three daughters, Danielle, Dana, and Jayden. First AME Church of Los Angeles continues to stand long to shelter worshippers, to save souls, and to spread the word of God throughout the city of Los Angeles and the world. So I'm happy to join with Mr. Parks and the rest of the council in commending and congratulating First AME Church of Los Angeles on the occasion of 139 years of service. The contributions that Fame has made are truly valuable and will be cherished by many. Congratulations.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Thank you so much to Ms. Perry and Mr. Parks for the presentation and for the Hunters for being here, two bright stars in the city who continue to shine, not just in Los Angeles but beyond. And thank you for your incredible service and your words that are going to be coming up shortly. I wanted to just tell a quick story. About two months ago, a friend who I exercised with three days a week in the neighborhood, we have a little group that goes for a walk in the park and up and down the stairs and things, said, "I'm kind of feeling like it's time to start going back to church again. Can you give me a recommendation of what you think is the church I'd most be fulfilled going to in the city?" And I said, "Well, do you know First AME?" And she said, "No, where is it?" And I said, "Do you know?" I gave the address of where it was, I gave a little bit of its history and some of my experiences there. And she went there. Today, cut forward two months later, she's been going every single Sunday. She runs a bakery down the street. Ms. Perry has eaten her cupcakes, Genevieve is her name, and she runs Delilah Bakery. And she has all the folks from the baking committee come over to this bakery now in Echo Park cooking for bake sales at the church. And she said she could not be happier. She said, "It's the most amazing church." And I love to sing, but you know, there's ladies who are in their 80s next to me just belting it out, and they're not even in the choir, so I can't even consider going to the choir. But I mean, these are people who feel it, who experience it in a very visceral way what their faith is. But it's also always been a center for this entire city, whether it's in the tough times or whether it's in our best times, this church has been an anchor for Los Angeles. And I have so many fond memories there, but my favorite probably is the day that Stevie Wonder played for a senator from Illinois who came on the anniversary of our urban unrest and gave a speech that led me that day to endorsing his kind of outside candidacy for president. We took a car ride together after he was at Fame that day. But there are so many moments like that where you have touched the lives of people who are not famous and people who are famous, from those who are the most needy among us to those who are the most blessed. You have been able to touch their lives, influence their lives to the better, and so God bless and thank you for all you do.
Thank you so much.
And Ms. Han.
Thank you. Well, I just wanted to rise and of course salute Fame and Pastor John Hunter, First Lady, and to thank Councilmember Parks and Perry for honoring 139 years of a true beacon and lighthouse in, not just Los Angeles, but really the entire country knows Fame and the work that you have done for good. And that is truly what this church is known for, is coming together during times of crisis. I remember after the civil unrest, it being really a gathering spot for the community to begin to heal and begin to rebuild and begin to address the anxiety that was happening in our city. And certainly, I was there for the service for our great Tom Bradley, and I believe Stevie Wonder played at that service as well. But it has been such a, again, I remember Rosa Parks' service, we all gathered at the church to have sort of a satellite service of that great civil rights leader. So Fame has certainly been a place for good, and your influence has grown, has broadened, but it has always been for good. And isn't that what we're all called to do? Isn't that what every church is called to do? And you have really epitomized what I think churches are to do here on earth every single day. Congratulations for 139 years, and here's to another 139 years. Blessings to you, and we know that you give back. You have been given and you truly give back to the city, to the region, to the country. So congratulations.
Thank you.
And Pastor, I just want to acknowledge that inauguration for the council, the mayor, we've had the first event at the church, the last two inaugurations, and I was there recently where we celebrated this special month, African American History Month. So I want to appreciate, express my appreciation from the warm welcome we all receive when we go to the church and attend services, so God bless you.
Thank you.
Mr. Parks?
Thank you. To Councilmember Parks, to Councilmember Perry, and Garcetti, and Han, and to our chairs, and to all of you, we're grateful to carry on the legacy of the African Methodist Episcopal Church, which is the oldest institution established by African Americans in this country, the oldest black college, Wilberforce University, the oldest black publication, The Christian Recorder, and here in Los Angeles, First AME Church. Our theme is first to serve. We enjoy serving the community. Our theology embraces reaching out and not only meeting the spiritual needs of men and women of any race
women of any race, of any background, but also the tangible needs of educating, inspiring, feeding, employing, uplifting, and undergirding. I stand here along with my wife Denise, who serves as the president of our organizations in a long line of leaders. We stand on the shoulders of the H. Hartford Brookins and my immediate predecessor, Dr. Cecil Chip Murray, and all of those who have served this community with distinction and have made such a great impact. We are humbled to receive this honor and this recognition on behalf of this institution and on behalf of our nineteen thousand eight hundred members. We continue to look forward to partnering with this council, with the city, with the county, and with all of our constituents to make this the kind of place that I know we all aspire and dream for it to be. Thank you all so very, very much. Thank you.
Not to take too much time, but I just want to thank everyone as well for this recognition today, for the opportunity to be here and to highlight that which we do at FAME. Certainly, we do it in a spirit of humility, and we're just honored to be here. I am thankful to Councilman Parks for all the support that he has given us, Councilman Perry, Councilman Garcetti, Councilwoman Han. It is truly a blessing to be at FAME and be given the opportunity to do the work that we do. It is so important, the partnerships that are created with the public sector, the private sector, and the faith-based communities. I don't think any city can be successful unless all of those are operating in unison with each other, and we are just really pleased to be an integral part of that here in Los Angeles. We don't take it lightly, the position that we came into and the work that is ahead of us that needs to be done. So, on behalf of everyone at FAME and all of our staff, our members, we thank you all for this recognition and commit to you that we will continue to be that beacon of light not only in Los Angeles but across this country. Thank you very much.
Our next presentation is CD nine, L.A. Convention Center. Ms. Perry.
Yeah. Just waiting for my notes, but while I'm waiting, I'd like to ask all of our friends from the Los Angeles Convention Center to come forward and join us. You know, they are way ahead of the curve and continue to be way ahead of the curve. Come close, come close. Come on. They have many, many fans. So, it's my privilege today to recognize the general manager, Mr. Abasi, and the staff of the Los Angeles Convention Center for achieving yet again another honor, a LEED certification, the prestigious gold level certification in leadership in energy and environmental design for existing buildings awarded by the U.S. Green Building Council. And you can see all of their awards right here in just a minute. They're holding them up. They're very proud. LEED is an internationally recognized green building certification system, providing third-party verification that a building or community was designed and built using strategies aimed at improving performance across all the metrics that matter most. The Los Angeles Convention Center was the only and largest existing building in the city of Los Angeles to become LEED certified back in September of two thousand eight, and that award is right there, on my left, your right, if you're watching on television. In December twenty-ten, the Convention Center attained the LEED EB Gold Level for four-point-one million square feet of building on a fifty-four acre property that was opened back in nineteen seventy-one, with the newest portion completed seventeen years ago in nineteen ninety-three. And here is this award right here. So, our own Convention Center became the largest Convention Center in the nation to achieve this milestone. LEED certification identifies the Los Angeles Convention Center as a pioneering example of sustainable design and demonstrates leadership in transforming the building industry. LEED EB certification is considered by industry analysts to be one of the most challenging to achieve when compared to LEED certification for pre-planned developments not yet built. This is a highly coveted gold level certification, and it's a true honor, a fitting tribute to the monumental achievements of Mr. Abasi and the entire Convention Center family, and that shows their commitment to the city of Los Angeles, their pursuit of being best in class with goals in environmental stewardship and responsibility that directly supports the city's vision for environmental excellence and further upholds the city of Los Angeles as the capital city of the twenty-first century at the forefront of our global environmental consciousness. So, what we have here is a model environmental-friendly facility. Its solar panels are capable of meeting electricity needs of an estimated one hundred homes. Its recycling, energy efficiency, and water conservation programs help to conserve the environment. Now, my favorite part is the biodegradable food service ware. I believe it's made out of potatoes, composite potato parts. It's very interesting. I'm not sure that you could actually eat it if you had to, but it just shows how far you can go in being innovative. And they use this food service ware in eleven public food outlets. So, I am proud that our council is here today to commend the Convention Center and its green team for their dedicated public service to the citizens of Los Angeles and for representing and reflecting what is best in our city. Now, it's my pleasure to welcome Mr. Purya Abasi, the general manager and CEO of the Convention Center, to say a few words on behalf of his staff.
Thank you. Thank you. Good morning, and much appreciation goes to Councilmember Perry that has been an amazing supporter of the Convention Center business and our environmental work that we've been able to achieve in the past few years. I also want to acknowledge and thank the mayor and council for your support in terms of the work that we do at the Convention Center, specifically in terms of environmental work. If a city is to become the biggest green city in the nation, if a city is to become the capital of the twenty-first century, it needs to have a reflection of the best realized in its Convention Center. And that is what we've been blessed to do in the past few years, and that is why it's such a blessing to represent and reflect all of you and what is best about Los Angeles every day of the year. And it could not have been done without the amazing work of the team that is behind me and the team that is actually at the Convention Center right now hosting the nation in terms of the NBA All-Star Game. I just want to make sure that it is clearly conveyed that at a time that the city is going through difficult financial crisis, that the team here and the team at the Convention Center realize how important this is, that we should never forget what is right and continue doing what is right in terms of, again, environmental work. So, thank you very much. Thank you for your acknowledgements, and thank you for the blessing to be able to reflect and represent the best of you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, we're going to go in the back and take a nice picture. Okay?
Ms. Han?
Oh, sorry.
Thank you. I just wanted to rise and congratulate everyone on being LEED Gold Certified, and it's such a great designation for our Convention Center. And, you know, you spoke about doing the right thing, and of course, we want to do the right thing. We want to be the cleanest, greenest big city in the country. I mean, it really is who we are. It's how we behave. It's the message we want to give out. But, you know, it's also good for business, because I think as, you know, other cities, corporations, organizations become more aware of how important it is to protect our environment, they're going to choose to come to Convention Centers that reflect those values. And tourism is the number-one industry in this city, and the more conventions we can book, the better off we are, particularly as it relates to our general fund in the city of Los Angeles, and we're able to fund what people appreciate, our police, our fire, our street services. But people make a choice on where they want to come hold their conventions, and I think this is good for business, because I think more and more conventions are choosing places to go that hold dear these values about protecting the quality of our environment. So, congratulations to all of you. Thank you for staying the course and for your support, Ms. Perry, on always making sure that this is a priority for our Convention Center. So, congratulations.
Thank you, Ms. Han. Mr. LaBonge.
Very much. And, Ms. Perry, as always, the work that you've done, not just in the Convention Center but all of downtown, is to be commended, Jan. And a lot of rooftops downtown to get green, and you've made a lot of green lawns, but especially the lawn that Mr. Abasi and Phil Hill and the whole team, you got to be proud. You know, yesterday I was with the Water Power crew who made an improvement in an area, and I spoke to them and how proud they are for what they've done. You should be proud, and as Ms. Han spoke of, the issues related to the tourism, and people do look at this as an opportunity. That's something to wear a badge. So, on the new T-shirts that you get out, put that on the back of the T-shirts of those who would want to wear them and say that it's U.S. Green Building Council's number-one building in the West Coast. Where's their headquarters? In Washington? Where's their headquarters? In Washington? We'll say number-one building west of Washington DC, our nation's capital. Congratulations. Thank you. The Convention Center is important. Any modernization or expansion should include the vision that you all share to welcome the world to Los Angeles. Thank you.
Ms. Perry.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you, and congratulations to our Convention Center folks. Thank you very much. Our next presentation. The, Mr. Reyes? Eraser? Mr. Ed Reyes, CD one. Well, the next one is going to be our final one. CD two? CD fourteen. Are you ready, Mr. Weezer? Okay, Mr. Weezer. Okay, Mr. Reyes. Didn't want to trick you on that. For all eyes.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. President. I'm very excited today to have a number of individuals who either work, live, or play in downtown Los Angeles, near the Arts District and around the Arts District. And today, we are here to thank them and congratulate them for their efforts to bring their first-ever dog park to downtown Los Angeles. Mr. Garcetti, you could walk all the way from Echo Park to enjoy this beautiful park in downtown LA. Do you have a dog? No? Okay. All right. Mr. Weston, Mr. Weston will loan you one on his Fridays when he gives out dogs, the pet adoptions. And this is really a community effort, and what happened here because of the efforts of Senior Lead Officer Jack Richter, John Sazlow, and the organization of Los Angeles River Artists and Business Associations, La Raba, as it's known, they transformed an abandoned lot into a wonderful park for our four-legged friends. We wouldn't have seen this possible if it wasn't because of the cooperation of the property owner and the community residents who said, "We have waited long enough to see a dog park in our community," and they made it happen. It is not an official recreation and parks, official park, but I can tell you, we are helping as much as we can to allow this park to flourish and to get the necessary resources it needs to allow it to be a wonderful dog park. For example, recently, the committee members approached my office to help assistance, to get assistance in bringing water to the park. We donated a thousand dollars to not only bringing water but also to purchase the water font to hydrate the dogs that use this park. So, I wanted to thank them. They've done a wonderful job, and at this time, I want to welcome up for a few words Joseph Petruzzelli. Did I pronounce that right?
Yes.
I said that correctly. The president of the Los Angeles River and Artists and Business Association. Let's give them all a big round of applause. Thank you very much.
Thank you all for recognizing us. Like was mentioned previously, this is really a community effort spearheaded by, unfortunately, they're not here, but John Sazlow and Senior Lead Officer Jack Richter, that really sparked the genesis of this kind of bonding neighborhood event to take the blighted lot and turn it into something that the residents of just not only the Arts District but downtown could all enjoy. And the organization, La Raba, has been instrumental in helping fund that as well as the Jose Weezer's office, Councilman Weezer's office, in getting the necessary utilities and water and lights and security, as well as the Arts District bid that does the maintenance and opens and unlocks the park every morning and locks it up at night. So, thank you so much, and it's really just, it's the volunteers and the members of the community that have helped out to make it what it is now. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you. So, I want to congratulate Sharon Tomlin, Paul Mackley, James Shaw, Duke Smith, Kim Neverman, Joseph Petruzzelli, that's a cool name by the name, Petruzzelli, Mike Manzuri, another cool name, Jonathan Gerald, and anybody else that we missed. Say your names.
Carolyn Paxton.
All right.
And Janine Zakaišek from Pussy and Pooch.
All right. You know, downtown LA, as you know, we are, more and more residents are moving in. We need some basic services for the local residents, and a dog park is one of those where the local residents are demanding more of building a community. And so, with this, it's going to go a long way to help our residents stroll the streets, take their park, their dogs to a park where they could roam and be free. And Mr. Weston, I asked Mr. Garcetti earlier if he had a dog. He said no, but I said, "Keep your eyes and ears open when Mr. Weston does his pet adoption here on Friday." So, he's going to be looking out. So, all right. Thank you very much.
Mr. Reyes and then Mr. LaBonge.
Thank you, Councilmember President. I want to congratulate Councilmember Weezer, the colleagues. When we look at the planning discipline and our planning police powers, what occurred about eight years ago, two thousand one, two thousand two, we took on the adaptive reuse ordinance. When we invoked adaptive reuse, what we did is we brought to life many of the structures that lay dormant for decades. So, when that life comes to fruition, now you have a whole new social network. You have a whole new interactive process in how we use space, and we start redefining that space. So, the people that moved in, I call them the frontiers, the pioneers, because they were the new wave that brought this area back to life. I want to congratulate Councilmember Weezer, because as a council member, now he has to address all of these quality-of-life issues that comes from bringing a dormant space back to life. And it includes our pets, it includes our families, it includes our friends, it includes where we socialize. All that's coming together, so my hats off to you, councilmember, and to the members of the community who have been the cowards, the pillars of rejuvenating downtown. I congratulate you. Congratulations.
Mr. LaBonge.
Much what Mr. Reyes said, but my dog's Dexter. I'd like to each just go to the mic and give a shout-out to your dog and the name of your dog, because they watch Channel thirty-five, too. Name your dogs.
Roger and Rosinka.
All right, good.
Jackson.
Jackson.
Kitty.
Elvis, Izzy, Django, Pistash, Kona, and I'm forgetting the sixth one.
all of these quality-of-life issues that comes from bringing a dormant space back to life. And it includes our pets, it includes our families, it includes our friends, it includes where we socialize. All that's coming together, so my hats off to you, council member, and to the members of the community who have been the cowards, the pillars of rejuvenating downtown. I congratulate you. Congratulations.
Mr. Labonge.
Much what Mr. Reyes said, but my dog's Dexter. I'd like to each just go to the mic and give a shout out to your dog and the name of your dog, because they watch Channel 35, too. Name your dogs.
Roger and Rosinka.
All right, good. Jackson.
Kitty.
Kitty.
Elvis, Izzy, Django, Pistash, Kona, and I'm forgetting the sixth one.
Flower and Shep. Shep.
Mr. Sneaky, Cheeky, and Munchy.
Coco. Coco. Good Dexter says hello. And for Elvis, I love old Shep, so that's good there. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Labonge, I named my dog Coco. Guess what type of dog it is and the color?
Blue.
Chocolate, yes, Coco color. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Weezer, you have another presentation?
Just a brief presentation. It's so wonderful to be on the other side of things. We're usually up here arguing about the marijuana ordinance, but it's a pleasure to be exchanging certificates and awards. And we want to thank Officer Jack Richter for all of his efforts to nurturing community relations in our neighborhood. And it's really his inspiration that kicked us off into this, into this action, besides the fact that many of our members live and walk their dogs right near this dog park. We'd like to give this gift as a reminder that, we'd like to give this gift to Councilman Weezer as a reminder, there are many modalities of healing, including the artistically beautiful dog park that we're developing right now. Thank you so much, Councilman Weezer.
Thank you so much. This is beautiful.
Thank you very much. And again, this is certainly a community-driven effort. I congratulate all of you for your efforts, and there's much more to come in our beautiful downtown Arts District. And a lot of you are pioneers who moved to downtown many, many years before anybody else even thought that downtown could be home to many of us. So congratulations again.
Mr. Weezer, do you want to do your other presentation now?
Yes. I have another presentation on behalf of Mr. Alarcon.
Yes, you want to do that now?
I'll do it afterwards, yeah.
All right. So then, Mr. Reyes, and then we'll come back to, while we're doing the transfer, let's do the roll, please.
Alarcon, Cardinal, Han, Weezer, Cory, and Labonge, Parks, Peter, Reyes, Rose, Donald, Smith, Weston, Garcetti, thirteen members present, and a forum president.
Very well, thank you. And Mr. Parks will be our first one up on number eight. As soon as we get in with presentations, Mr. Parks, we'll do that first. Mr. Reyes, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President. If we can ask our guests to assemble here at the podium.
Good morning, sir. Gentlemen. Please. Clouding, guys, you can see yourselves on TV tonight.
Colleagues, it's an honor for me to have the Loyola High School principal, Frank Kazakowski, our Loyola High School athletic director, Chris O'Donnell, Loyola High School Director of Communications, Ben Tomlin, and our Loyola High School cross-country coaching staff, Dr. Lalo Diaz, Dr. Philip Bland, and Dr. Mickey DiPaolo. But most importantly, with me today are the 2010 CIF California State Cross Country Champions, Loyola High School Cubs. Let's give them a round of applause. A lot of love, folks. And the team, and when I call your name, raise your hand, because I want to make sure they know who you are. We have with us Philip, and these are the seniors, Philip Costelnek.
Costelnek.
Costelnek. We have Elias Gideon, right behind me, Jeffrey Lords. Great? Raise your hands, Eli. Come on, let them see you. A lot of miles you ran there. James Reese. James. James Dewhouse. There we go. Our juniors, Edward Trim. Edward. Charles McCourt. Where are you, Charles? There you are. Andrew Bland. There you go. Jared Jones. See, colleagues, and we have Andrew Verdin. Why, Andrew, I almost forgot you, Andrew. Good. You know, colleagues, to me, Loyola is so special, and reason being that some of you that are now in your third term might see this as a very familiar presentation, because this is our fifth state title. Fifth. Now, that is amazing. They want titles in 2002, 2004, 2007, and 2008. And this does not include their five CIF seventh section championships. Now, Loyola is a very special place. It's on Pico and Hoover, between Venice and Pico, and it's sandwiched in a very special place, a historic neighborhood, but more significantly, that the students have done so much work in the district. They reach out, they work with our local communities, they advocate, they tutor. They are learning what it is to be part of a community. And after their master plan completion, the campus is just very, very beautiful. They kept the historic touch, but more importantly, they became part of the fabric of the neighborhood. So I am very honored to have them here with me. Their home course is Elysian Park, they train there. But there's also a sign in Griffith Park that was placed by Councilman Labonge, and that sign states, "Griffith Park, the official training course of the California State Champions Cross Country Loyola Cubs." Now, the smart thing there, Tom, is you did not put a year. So they're going to be champions forever, and that's where they belong, as champions. So I have a great honor to introduce to you the coach, Coach Lalo Diaz. Now, for me, Coach Diaz is one of those individuals, is one of those gems. He grows up in northeast, Lincoln Heights, right?
Absolutely.
We won't start naming the gangs, right? But the northeast area, Lincoln Heights, one of the original suburbs of Los Angeles. He teaches at, he graduates from Cathedral, teaches at Canwell, trains at Canwell, as well as Cathedral, but now has devoted 24 years, correct?
Correct.
Here at Loyola. Now, 24 years as a coach, when you look at all the championships, that to me demonstrate his love not only for the discipline of being a teacher and a coach, but also what he gives back to the community, because many of these individuals, many of these youngsters, become leaders in their own right. We have several Loyola Cubs here in City Hall, some in management position that have been trained by Dr. Diaz. And there's a list of those folks that I bring with me, but his influence has been vast and has been there for many, many years. So when we look at what they've garnered, 12 CIF and California State Championship teams, it is something that we should be proud of as a city. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce to you Loyola High School Cross Country Team Coach, Lalo Diaz.
It's a special honor to be here before the city council, and indeed, we have so many connections here as we articulated everything in writing prior to this meeting. We start to look at our training at Griffith Park, and it's dovetailed, there's so many of the districts, as I go from District 1 to District 15, some of our runs take us down Washington into Councilman Weston's area, so we go from one area to another. And of course, Councilman Weston's son was a, and continues to be a Loyola Cub, and we are so proud to be part of that. And of course, Mr. Labonge, we always see him training himself on Saturday, and our days off, he's there in high training with his private instructor there. But we with honor, we with honor accept this on behalf, not only of Loyola High School, but on behalf of the entire city, because this is certainly a city project, and we are proud to be members and just even if it's a small fragment of the city of Los Angeles, we are proud. And we've brought as gifts to the council, we've brought championship T-shirts and denoting the fact that we have in fact secured our fifth state title, and for this, we thank you. And on behalf of Loyola High School, on behalf of the student body, and in particular, the members of the cross-country squad, we thank you. At this time, with pride, I introduce our school principal, and he, on behalf of the administration, would like to share his words. Mr. Frank Kazakowski.
We have some colleagues to offer some comments after you finish, Mr. Principal. Go ahead, and then we'll have some colleagues offer comments. Go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted, on behalf of the entire Loyola High School school community, I wanted to thank you for this recognition of this small segment of our school community. Congratulations to Coach Diaz and the men of the Loyola Cross Country Team, but also our entire school community celebrates this and thanks you for this recognition. Thank you.
Thank you. Council President Garcetti, and then Councilmember Labonge.
Thank you. I'll just rise briefly. First of all, I find it very generous of a Cathedral grad to honor Loyola this way. So thank you, Mr. Reyes.
Well, one city.
But you've got a great council member in Ed Reyes. He loves Loyola, he loves the Cubs, represents you extremely well. I know you know that, but thank you, Ed, for bringing in the team. And we might not all recognize each other, because you look a little different. I've never seen you dressed up quite in the ties. You've probably not seen me in this tie, because we usually cross each other in Elysian Park every morning where I go out jogging. You guys are racing by me. I live right next to the Baxter Stairs, which I know you guys were on just a couple weeks ago, and I was inspired while you were on the stairs to try to keep up with you, but I'm no longer a 16-year-old boy. So you guys gave me a great, great workout. I see you out there. We always admire you, know that you guys are champions, and want to congratulate Loyola and the Cubs for having that bar of excellence. And I hope you continue coming to Elysian Park. It's a great, great place to run. We'll see you out there in the mornings. Thanks.
Councilmember Labonge.
Very much, Coach. I just want to tell you, you have the greatest job. To coach young men or young women is the greatest job. I wanted to be a coach, but there was no teaching jobs when I graduated from college, and I had an opportunity here to work in City Hall. So I want to really salute you, because the coach is the driving force with the great respect and support you get from your administration. So let's give Coach Diaz a big hand right there. And Councilman Reyes, I want to thank you, because as the councilman of the district, the work you've done to really make such a change to the central part of Venice Boulevard from Vermont all the way through Normandy, the work, the historic restoration. Also, many schools use the Loyola fields as a, as a central part of the elementary school CYO program, which is so key for Loyola. So give the Cathedral guy a big hand. I know that's tough for you, but he's, you're two Cathedral guys, the coach's Cathedral, the councilman's Cathedral. And then to all the athletes, to be state champs, that's very special, because no one could take that away from you years and years from now. There was a great City Player of the Year from Mr. Weezer's district, Randy Ra Garcia. He was City Player of the Year. He became LAPD a lieutenant. Every squad room that I saw Randy Garcia was in, when I came in as a councilman, I said, "That guy right there is City Player of the Year." And everybody remembered that. For your lives, Cubs, you're state champions, and that's very special. That's why that sign's up there in Vermont Canyon, and I love to see you train there. And congratulations for coming down here. And when Coach Diaz said he was coming down, Ed, I said, "Well, make him run down." But then they couldn't, they couldn't wear their Letterman's jackets, which are so nice to see. So come down to City Hall on a run sometime, or run up to the top of the Todd Bradley Tower. Congratulations, Loyola.
And as a graduate of Notre Dame High School in Shemalooks, I offer my congratulations also.
With that, I'd like to present to the principal and Coach Diaz this resolution that is signed by every council member, by Mayor Antonio Vidalosa, who would have liked to have been here. He tried his best, but he was conflicted, but he did sign this certificate. And I'll read the last, whereas. Whereas the Loyola High School Club Country Team Coaches, Dr. Lalo Diaz, Dr. Frank Mesa, Don Lords, Mickey DiPaolo, Dr. Phil Bland are to be recognized for the dedication and commitment to the Loyola High School Los Angeles Cubs Cross Country Team and Loyola Community. Congratulations.
Very well. Congratulations to Loyola. Thank you, Mr. Reyes. And our next, our final presentation, Mr. Weezer. Mr. Weezer?
Sure, sure.
Mr. Weezer?
One second.
All right.
Congratulations.
How are you, sir? Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'm standing in today for Councilmember Alarcon, who unfortunately had to attend a funeral today. And every month, he honors an organization for childhood safety. This is something that is very important to him, because he lost a child due to a car accident. And this month, he is honoring New Economics for Women for the Child Passenger Safety Seat Program. The program teaches families how to use car seats properly to obey the law and reduce injury to their children in auto accidents. According to the statistics, 80% of child restraints are misused. Child safety car seats are awarded to families who attend the workshops. These workshops take place all over County of Los Angeles, and Mr. Alarcon would like to encourage his colleagues to work with New Economics for Women to schedule a workshop in your district. Right now, I'd like to turn it over to David Flores, the program manager for New Economics for Women, and to say a few words. David?
Thank you very much. I'd just like to very simply say thank you very much for this recognition. Unfortunately, I was the only one that was able to make it out from my program, because as we speak, my staff is doing the work that is so important to Councilmember Alarcon. So again, very simply put, thank you very much for this recognition. New Economics for Women really appreciates it. Thanks.
Thank you very much, David. And on behalf of the city of Los Angeles and Mr. Alarcon, I'd like to present the certificate of appreciation, thanking New Economics for Women for their work on behalf of child restraint safety. I know that this is something that strikes close to the heart of Mr. Alarcon, and he is every month honoring an organization that does its work, and you have been doing some spectacular work. So congratulations, and thank you very much on behalf of Mr. Alarcon and the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Mr. Clerk, we've called the roll, and let's do the agenda.
First order of business is approval of the minutes.
Mr. Smith, second by Mr. Parks.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Cory and Ms. Han.
Mr. President, first items on the agenda, items one through eight are items for which public hearings have been held.
One through eight, colleagues, any specials, one through eight? I think we have cards. We're going to take Mr., that'll be in a moment, Mr. Parks, one through eight. We're going to call eight special for Mr. Parks. Ms. Han? Excuse me, Ms. Han?
I'd like to call six special.
Six. Six for Ms. Han. Mr. Parks, eight. Mr. Weezer, do you have one?
We've got it.
Six, okay.
Eight.
We have some cards, Mr. Clerk.
Yes, Mr. President, but public hearing has been satisfied in that section.
All right. So on the remaining items, open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Next items, please.
Items nine through 13 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Nine through 13, colleagues, any special? Mr. Clerk, cards on items?
You have cards on items nine and 12.
So nine and 12, we'll call special. Seeing no one on the special, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Next item, please.
On the continuation agenda, item 14 is a public convenience and necessity item in Council District 7, noted for public hearing, and there is a request to continue that matter to Tuesday, February 22nd.
Without opposition, that'll be continued, number 14.
That does take care of the items called special. That would take council back to public comment.
Mr. Parks has item eight. He wishes to move. Let's take number eight, Mr. Parks, and then we'll go to public comment.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, what we have here is the overage of the local return money, in which we asked the Department of Transportation to provide a list of projects that clearly would be something in which would be priorities for this measure, are local return. There's been a basically a variety of projects that touch citywide from the valley all the way to South Los Angeles, and one of them specifically basically funds a commitment made by LADOT that deals with the Expo Line, specifically the Western Avenue stop. And so that is something in which a major safety issue of purchasing land to where there will be a, a small parking area, so that areas, by putting out a left turn sign, or left turn signals at the intersection eliminates all of the parking for the business community. So the idea was to buy the lot in which we are filling the gap. But all of these have been looked at. The issue of most of those that are dealing with the South Los Angeles area are listed in a South LA master plan report done by LADOT several years ago, and it's addressing a number of stop signs, stoplights. And so I'd ask for an aye vote as we move forward. Also, at some point, the $817,000 is listed as the, one area as the matching funds, those could end up being made available if they are, if there's not a need for that level of contingency. And so that's something in which can be dealt with in future reports. And so that's something in which can be dealt with in future reports. So I'd ask for an aye vote as we move this package of issues together. And I believe it also addresses that eventually we'll have the five percent paid in bicycle reports that will be forthcoming on the local or projects.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Mr. Weezer?
Thank you, Mr. President. Can we keep this item on the table for now? There's some items that we believe will not impact some projects, but we had had a commitment the previous time we were around that we would put the streetcar project from downtown LA in the local return for Measure R funding. We had an agreement not to put it in a request to MTA at the time that we would get it some local return money. But there are some projects in here that have been allocated more money than they would need for the following fiscal year. So we're looking right now with CLA to see if it's possible to allocate some of that money for the streetcar, as was made at the commitment. So we could hold this item on the table if that's okay?
Mr. Parks, hold that on the table for a while.
If we can get it done quickly, because I got to go.
We have a pretty short agenda today, Mr. Weezer.
Yes, yes. We just need a few minutes.
Okay, very well. Let's hold that on the table. And let's, Mr. Corrigan, do you have a question, sir? Okay. Let's then go to public comment. Mr. Sacks, public comment, followed by Dr. Williams, Walter Bechtel. Public comment.
Yes, thank you. Good morning or good afternoon. All those presentations, lose track of time. Very interesting, couple of years on this project, as Mr. Parks just said, really was fascinating in the last meeting to hear that the discussion regarding the sale of the parking garages was initiated almost four, over four years ago, according to Councilman Parks. How long is four years? Well, that's almost, that's a term. So for the whole term that this council has been sitting, these discussions have been going on regarding the sale of the parking garages, yet the public input and backlash has only come to the light in the last three months. So here's the council moving again to qualify themselves by successfully, successfully arbitrating for defeat. So how much money, can we get an idea, because you all requested reports on this, that, the other thing? How much money was spent by the CAO's office and the CEO's office and the numerous city council, city departments discussing this parking garage fiasco, only to end up being thrown in the round, the round file cabinet? Pretty amazing. It seems this is an ongoing thing. Again, four years on the parking garages, numerous years on this Expo Line project for a parking garage, a report detailed by the LADOT. Yet flowing out of the council chambers, it's like a brand-new day. Be a brand-new day when you're all out of office.
Then Walter Bechtel. Dr. Williams and Walter Bechtel.
Good morning. Dr. Clyde Williams, 4011 Farbert Road, Elsorino, Northeast LA. Last night, the subject of the seven-ten and some other things that are related to transport were brought up in a candidate forum in Elsorino. One of the issues was being informed of what's going on. Question, how about the call for projects for MTA 2011? How about Tiger One? How about Tiger Two? And, and we're giving up on Tiger Three, but the neighborhood councils weren't notified of these in any sort of timely fashion or at all in some cases. This one again, the Measure R Local Returns. Why don't you get neighborhood council input to these? Right now, for next week's SR seven-ten conversations meeting with MTA and Caltrans, we're putting forward a multimode building program for all of Northeast LA. So we have some expertise in it, but we only know when it's coming on when it comes to either the committees or the city councils. Timely notifications to the neighborhood councils could give you a lot better transportation issues. Thank you.
Walter Bechtel, followed by Michael Carrion.
People smoking this funny stuff, it's supposedly not legal, but it makes you sick anyway. I wish the city would look into that, whatever these funny cigarettes are, and, you know, and it's causing you to cough and come down with respiratory problems. But I wanted to say something about the CRA and the mayor said something, our CRA is helping people. I still have that article from the nineteen-ninety Downtown News where Gloria Molina and Mr. Jaroslawski both, in an unprecedented fashion, voted out Mr. James Woods from the, being the head of the CRA because they claimed then, and this is still true now, that the CRA cares more about big business dealings than truly finding places for people who are destitute and out of, out of, out of house to live. Because that's exactly what they did to us at the Ford Hotel. They kicked, they took a two-hundred-and-ninety-five unit hotel and they're changing it into a hundred-and-fifty unit hotel. That means half the people who could have stayed there aren't going to have a place to stay at all. The CRA is the same now as it ever has been. All it ever does is wants to pull the wool over everybody's eyes, and our mayor, Mr. Schmelzmann himself, Mr. Football Stadium himself, wants to back up the CRA. Well, I hope he gets told off by the governor, and I hope the governor explains to him, "Well, if the CRA is like you say it is, how come people are still saying they're still the same way that they were back in nineteen-ninety?" So I say no to CRA. We need to do something else. Thank you.
Michael Carrion.
Yes, my name's Michael Carrion. And if I can ask the council members to hold their conversation for at least two minutes? It's kind of disrespectful when the chairperson sits up there and tells people to shut up and cuts them short, but yet when constituents come up here, you guys ignore them. And that means a guest, too, please. I'm here because I'm sick and tired of the city having double standards. You guys have come to you several times, I even went to the chief of police about the illegal parking right across the street of your police vehicles. You guys ignored it. Spoke to Mr. LaBons' office several times. Mr. LaBons is the person who will give you his word, but do nothing about it. I call that hypocrisy. They told us that we were the worst, the rudest city in the world, sitting right up there, cutting people off, telling them where to go, how to get there, but he picks and chooses the people he rude to. That's inconsiderate. If you're going to be rude to one person, be rude to everybody. Parking laws are made real simple. E-plates are exempt from red zones? No, only in emergency. But your parking enforcement says that DOT is not responsible. General Services, General Services says, "We're not going to do it because we need to be told by city council." City council won't do it because you're afraid to deal with them. You know what the petty thing is? Department of Parking Enforcement says, "We don't do that because they'll cite us for everything we do." Grown men playing games. I want to take my last few seconds out to thank my councilman. He's finally standing up. He's finally putting in a motion so that you guys can look at this. I gave him a picture, a CD with seventy, seventy vehicles illegally parked yesterday right across the street in a two-block zone.
Jack Humperville, Mr. Humperville. Jack Humperville, not in chambers. Esperanza Matar? Esperanza? Richard Eastman? Richard Eastman?
Distinguished city council, acting mayor, or whatever your title is, and a sign, and all the council people that have heard me over the last fifteen or sixteen years, you know, I'm a former HIV/AIDS commissioner, person living with AIDS, and one of the founders of medical marijuana, and a proponent of Proposition 215 and SB 420. And I'm here today to help get the greed out of the weed and urge the voters in Los Angeles to vote no on Measure M, March eighth, in the primary election. Stop the five percent sin tax on medical marijuana. The Los Angeles City Council wants an extra five percent sin tax on medical marijuana. That means legal patients will have to pay a total of fourteen-point-seven-five percent tax for medicine. This is not fair. Medicine is not a sin. Join with Dennis Perone, the author of 215, and Richard Eastman, one of the proponents of SB 420 and a citizen of Los Angeles since the nineteen-seventies, and one of the guys that saved the Hollywood sign and ran for office a few years ago when we tried to make Hollywood a city. And Ms. Hahn and Mr. Corretts and the people that put Proposition M on the ballot, I feel like I'm in America around here because now my friends are Bernard Parks, Jan Perry, and Mr. Smith on the no side. You know, I helped elect Paul Corretts, and I was hoping to get Mrs. Hahn as the lieutenant governor, but when, I'm a loyal Democrat, but now I don't know if I could endorse her for the Congress, and I don't want to say if I could even help Mr. Corretts when he runs for reelection, because I'm going to run for the thirteen council districts when Mr. Garcetti is termed out. And some of you might think I'm a fool on the Hill, but I'm not. And a lot of people vote, and they do remember Richard Eastman. And about eight or ten thousand people voted for me. And vote no on Measure M, citizens of Los Angeles. AIDS drugs, cancer drugs, medicine is not taxed. The federal government gave you a message with Proposition Nineteen, and Richard Eastman has given you a message. Vote no on Measure M, March eighth. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Our final speaker on public comment, Arminak Nourijanian. Our final public speaker.
Respectable city council members, fellow Angelinos, my name is Arminak Nourijanian. I'm a liberal candidate, writing candidate, forance for city council member, office, for city council office from District Eight, which is south central. Actually, as a liberal candidate, I promise to cut down homeowners taxes forty percent. I promise to eliminate budget deficit by imposing taxes of four dollars per each barrel of oil produced in Los Angeles City. I promise to be, to enforce politics of fiscal responsibility, to cut down city executive wages, to eliminate wasteful spending, first of all, to, you know, to have also football stadium builders like Enshold's Entertainment Group, you know, find private funding. And I also promise to keep pensions for all city workers, including police officers, janitors, maintenance, workers, and wherever. But also, I promise to issue marriage certificates for homosexuals and lesbians from May's office. I promise to, to stop killing of pets, you know, in the city shelters, where they euthanize animals after four days and charge thirty dollars per animal, per each killed animal. Also promise to expedite issuance of Section Eight housing vouchers to city residents to promote more business for the city of Los Angeles. Also...
That completes our public comment for today. We will return to item number eight. There's a amended motion, number eight. We have two public speakers on the right since there's a amended motion. The public speakers can speak on those item, that item, Arnold Sachs and Donald, Dr. Williams on number eight, amended motion, number eight. Mr. Parks, we'll hear from the two speakers and we'll go back to number eight. Arnold Sachs, Dr. Williams, number eight.
Measure R Local Return Fund. I appreciate Mr. Weezer and his downtown trolley system. By the way, Mr. Weezer, did you happen to read about the trolley system in Atlanta? The two-and-a-half miles, I believe, or two-point-two miles they built in Atlanta for less than a hundred thou, a hundred million dollars, maybe around eighty million dollars? So do you expect the trolley system in LA to be more than two miles, and why is it estimates over a hundred million dollars? It just doesn't seem to make sense. And giving money to the Expo Line? I mean, okay, the parking lot is one thing, but the, nothing is said about the Flower and Twenty-third Street Station and Pico Boulevard Station? Why are they getting money? The cost overruns on that line are astronomical. What about the Green Line? What about putting some money into the, I mean, the Blue Line and enclosing it? You know, the mayor had a plan once, when he was younger, before he got even more corrupt, that he was going to enclose the light rail lines to make them weatherproof for elements, protect the public, except they ran out of money at Metro. There isn't doubt a big surprise. So now you're pouring money into Expo Light Rail Station Flower at Twenty-third Street and Expo Light Rail Station at Pico Boulevard? For what purpose? It's not even open, and you're already putting more money into it. They can't print money fast enough for that lame idea of a rail line. And the Wilshire Bus Only lanes? You got money here. Wilshire Boulevard Mixed Flow Lane Contingency. Contingency for what? For the new study that Councilman Rosendale initiated? Another study? Maybe it's to build shelf space for all the other studies that have been done on Wilshire Boulevard. What a waste of time.
Dr. Clyde Williams, Elsorino, Northeast LA. Come on Thursday night to the Caltrans MTA's conversations for the SR seven-ten, and we'll give you another list of four hundred different projects in Northeast LA, Council Districts One, Council District Thirteen, and Council District Fourteen. But we weren't informed as to when the Measure R Local Returns were going to be accepting projects. We belatedly found out about the call for projects for 2011, and we didn't even hear about Tiger One or Tiger Two. So we're quite concerned about the council districts need to cooperate with their neighborhood councils. We try to help. And we're going to be helping Northeast LA because we only get one meeting in LA for the Caltrans MTA seven-ten conversations. So we'd like to have more conversations with MTA, Caltrans, and we'd like to have more conversations with the relevant council districts because Northeast LA is going to be really hammered by this project. The current nominal project for the SR seven-ten will take everything from Valley Boulevard to Huntington Drive as construction site for the south portal. Thank you.
All right. That's public comment number eight on the amended motion. Mr. Weezer, number eight.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I've submitted a amended motion on this item after consultation with the CLA and CAO, that some of these items that have been proposed, one of them, for example, the annual sign replacement, that much money will not be needed for this coming year. And secondly, the item on matching funds, Measure R projects, it's redundant, and that money will not be needed as well. However, we've been advocating for money for the streetcar. We advocated for it when we were first talking about Measure R. We were promised that we should wait for the local return money. Here we are with the local return money, so I hope that we could move forward. The money that we get from this, the million dollars, we are currently doing a draft EIR through, through the MTA for the streetcar downtown that had due CRA dollars. This will go towards the preliminary engineering and the final EIR that's needed to move to the next phase to make the streetcar in downtown LA a reality. So if there are any questions, we do have the... So if there are any questions, we do have the CAO, CLA, and the Department of Transportation willing to come up to the table and answer any questions. Otherwise, I ask for your A vote on this. Thank you.
Mr. Labonge.
One other thing, if anyone from staff here, I want you to make sure you look at the technology that's in the world that has generation in the street as opposed to the wires. One of the challenges you're going to have with the historic cores is the additional trolley wires or what would be streetcar wires. So is the MTA represented here? Okay, are you familiar with any systems that operate without wires?
No, unfortunately.
Okay. I got it, but just, just as you go forward, because this is a great effort of yours, is to be commended, but I just want to put that on the table now. Go to the World Wide Web, city of Bordeaux, France, which put in six light rail lines, streetcar lines, without the wires. Please look at that so you could share that with all and see if it's a possibility. Thank you, Mr. Weezer. We push ahead. Thank you.
Mr. Parks, followed by Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, and Mr. Weezer, what I would request, because the LADOT has sat down and put together the priorities, that we move your motion to committee so they can be evaluated with other priorities. The way I read your motion, it seems to be a little inconsistent with the priorities of Measure R, and that we have made by priorities that we would fund and we put money into projects that were ready to go. We would not tie up Measure R money as we've done with Prop C and Prop A, and that certainly the contingency money is not dedicated. So if we move that and not, we move the report forward, but allow the $817,000, and also that the portion of the annual sign go back to committee so it can be compared and evaluated with other projects. I understand that your project is over $100 million. If I understand particular priorities as related to Measure R, it was for ready-to-go projects and investment at that time, or matching projects that got projects moving. And so I would think that it would be something that we'd want to consider, but not where we'd move it on committee after all the review on the proposed list. So I would move that we would move your, your motion to committee, that we would ask that the report move as amended, and to reduce that amount of, by $325,000, that we would move the $817,000 and not move that forward on the report and have it considered by T Committee. And I think with the Chair of T Committee not being here, we'd like to make sure that it was properly managed by that committee, as they've done in the past. So I'd ask that we send this to committee, but again, move the report as, that this would amend and move the money back for those two items, so they can be considered in a larger package of Measure R funding.
Mr. Cardenas.
Do you have a second?
Yeah.
Uh, she has a second.
Councilmember Parks, looking at the list of the projects, I can understand how certain council members would be fine with the report the way it is, with some minor adjustments or what have you. But however, I think we're giving a little bit too much credit to the previous process. I would recommend, colleagues, that we move this item forward with the, as amended by Mr. Weezer. Mr. Weezer has been extremely generous in being helpful with the overall city budgets and the overall city woes when it comes to monies that he's been willing to be generous enough to help out the city as a whole. And here he's asking for $1 million for a legitimate project that was actually promised to him in more ways than one. So I think we ought to honor that, and for us to just hold it up on a theoretical technicality I do not agree with. In addition to that, my recommendation, colleagues, would be if we don't, if we don't approve this as amended, I'm going to steal one of Mr. Parks's arguments, and that is, since the Chairman of Transportation isn't here, why don't we either hold this over till next week, so that the Chairman can present of Transportation? Or better yet, let's just send it back to committee. And if we send it back to committee, let me warn you, when I look at the list of projects, I would love to make my arguments about what legitimate project-ready projects are in my part of the district, or with all due respect, in the rest of the San Fernando Valley, because we're looking at $8.7 million on this list, and it's shy of $1 million being utilized for the entire San Fernando Valley. San Fernando Valley colleagues, so the bottom line is, we either approve it and respect the process, but allow Mr. Weezer to be afforded the opportunity to fund the project in his district by that $1 million, or my recommendation is we just throw this back to committee, and let's have some fun.
While we're having fun, Ms. Perry.
I wanted to stand in support of Mr. Parks's motion, because of the projects that are on the list are ready to go, ready to pop, and then get, if the Chairperson of Transportation is not here, I think he's coming back next week, and then go ahead and set a special meeting on the issue that Mr. Weezer is raising, separate and apart from what we're about to do today, so we can move forward on this. But let this part go forward now, because they are ready to go, and I think that we should be consistent in the way that we conduct our business and adhere to a process.
Mr. Weezer, followed by Mr. Parks, then Mr. Labonge.
I don't know.
Was I up? Okay. Very, thank you, and thank you very much for those words, Mr. Cardenas. It did remind me that when we did discuss Measure R, I asked that the streetcar be put into that, that the voters, voters will be voting on. My colleagues around the horseshoe, everybody was nodding yes to me, saying, "Don't do that, because we don't want to screw up the process, what MTA has already asked us and knows we're going to ask for." At that time, I made, everyone made the commitment, wait for the local return money. I said, "Fine." I've been asking for over a year now for a process on that local return money, and we got no process. All council districts, none of us had a chance to say, "These are our priorities for, for our district." All of a sudden, we got this report in T Committee, without us knowing what that process was, when we could apply or talk about a process, so there really wasn't a process. Now, are these projects ready to go? The streetcar is ready to go. We just got a report issued last week on the economic benefits, should a streetcar be completed? And we're going to create 9,000 jobs, going to create $25 million in economic activity in downtown LA. We're doing the draft EIR right now. We need this money to do the next phase, which is the preliminary engineering for this project. It's ready to go, so it fits that criteria. I'm asking, in a sense of fairness, what was committed verbally to Council District 14, and also saying that there was no process. So if we don't amend this today, I agree with Mr. Cardenas, let's go back and throw all of this back and talk about how these items got to be where they're at, and all the council office could talk about what their priorities are for local return money. That'd be a fair process, because we don't have one right now. So I ask that we move forward with my amendment. People around this horseshoe are also tired of me listening about my $10 million that I loaned the general fund two years ago that was promised back to build parking on Broadway, and here we are again. You know, I didn't want to say this, but Mr. Cardenas set it for me. I've been a good sport for the greater need of this city, and I have this project on Broadway that we've already lost $10 million. And here we are again, when a verbal promise was made to downtown part of my district, and again, the same thing is happening on some minor technicalities that, if there was a process, and my streetcar didn't get funded because I saw what that process, fine, but there was no process here. So we either throw this back altogether, or I ask that we move forward with this amendment with the streetcar getting its fair share. Thank you.
Mr. Parks.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, let me just say there has been a process. You voted on the process of a policy for Measure R. It's in place, and it talked about not making the same mistakes as, that we've done for Prop C and A, and to use the money for very specific things that could be done immediately. Mr. Cardenas, when you, Mr. Cardenas? Mr. Cardenas?
Mr. Cardenas, Ms. Cardenas.
When you talk about this project, if you, if you look at it in isolation, then your comments are accurate. If you go back a step and remember, all the money that was spent recently on Caltrans, Safety Lou, and all of the other funding, MTA called for projects over the last couple of months, almost all of it went to the Valley. This project, in the sense that we made a point to DOT on this issue, that they have left out most of the city south of the Santa Monica Freeway, and that's why these issues have finally begun to catch up. You go back and look recently, we voted on several million dollars, you can tell me how much it was, for bicycle paths within the last month. We voted on Safety Lou, almost all the Safety Lou money in the city went to the Valley, and all that matching fund from Prop A and C comes from citywide funds to support the matching funds. Almost all the Caltrans money that we've gotten recently went to the Valley. So if you look at this in isolation, you can make a point. But if you want to go back and look at all the money that preceded it, where each time we were told by DOT, "Your time is coming," and if we go back and look at a report the DOT did years ago that said, "Something is going to happen south of Santa Monica Freeway," it just never has. That's what we're basically bringing today. And then when we make a commitment to MTA, that we're going to buy a parking lot in order for a Western and exposition to be safe, that's what we've committed to today. When we look at this report, and they say there are no bus stops, or places to sit for buses for people to ride, in an area that's the most transit-dependent in the city, that's what we're trying to solve today. But if you go back, just in the last three months, go back and look at your files for all the transportation money that we've approved, Caltrans, MTA, Safety Lou, and you'll see the bulk of the dollars went to the Valley, not in any other part of the city. And so I would say that this is something, in the sense of looking at these projects, these are long time coming. The only project south of the Santa Monica Freeway that we've seen in the last couple of years is Ms. Hahn was fortunate enough to get something down in the harbor, and we had to actually educate DOT that that's not south Los Angeles, it's the harbor. And so these are things that we want to make sure that there is fairness, but not just fairness on incremental reports, fairness overall. And that's what's not happened in dealing with transportation dollars over the last several years.
Mr. Labonge, then Mr. Cardenas.
Vice Chair of the Committee, I support Mr. Weezer. I support Mr. Cardenas. I reject what Mr. Parks said there, in a sense of things. I think it's important that you take this little money here to try to do something that's important. You look back to Tom Bradley, when he wanted the, what we would call the special connection between the Convention Center and Union Station. And in a phone call, when there was a different administration in Washington, they took it out. That was funded. This completes that gap of study. And that's why I want to just mention about the systems that they have in other parts of the world that don't call, may reduce the cost. And also, Mr. Parks, there was $10 million on Wilshire Boulevard that went to help Expo, that went on the MTA. And I did that because there was a time that Expo needed it. And there's a lot of severe problems on Wilshire that are not getting solved, because West Los Angeles says, "We don't want the busway." So we got to do what's right in what's right time, and the policy is to help the people. And Mr. Weezer wants to help the people in the central part of the city by having this study to connect. This doesn't mean we're funding this project. This is part of the menu that will be successful. I just want to look at that. So Members as Vice Chair, I stand tall, and I say, "Vote yes on this amendment," and ask in a friendly amendment, "Make sure those at this table, look at those systems and come back," because you're going to get hung up with the Conservancy and others on wires and everything else. And if we go run down the street, and there's a one-way, if it's one-way down Broadway, it's one-way up another street, is that right, Mr. Weezer? That makes sense? And for the facts, Vermont and Western, north and south, Wilshire east and west are the most transit-dependent, heavily-used bus systems in the city. So I stand to vote for Mr. Weezer's issue.
Mr. Cardenas, then Mr. Parks.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your recent history lesson on transportation dollars, Mr. Parks, but I was also keeping in mind, when it comes to housing dollars, CRA dollars, all kinds of different, the panoply of authority and control that we have over funds throughout the city. When I look at it from that vantage point, I think the argument that you made doesn't match when you look at all of the expenditures and all of the infusion of bond money and various special funds that the city controls. So I agree that on your statement of that limited window of time, you are accurate, and as you, as you always are. I respect you, because you do not stretch the truth. I respect you, because you actually speak to the actual facts of the issue, but at the same time, I was not, just want to correct for the record, I was not talking about only that window of time, only the recent history of motions and actions and funding that we've done in the city. However, when I look at what Councilmember Weezer has done, even though, as I mentioned earlier, he's been extremely generous and being responsible of trying to help out city matters beyond his district, at the same time, I look at his motion, and his motion isn't to affect all the projects. His motion isn't to cause consternation on the entire list. I think that Mr. Weezer is being as respectful and surgical as possible in trying to make sure that that $1 million goes to its rightful place, and that the few number of other projects or efforts in this motion are affected. So with that, I agree with Mr. Labonge and Mr. Weezer, that this, his amendment is in fact surgical, his amendment will in fact allow all of these other opportunities to continue, and it is not a detrimental effect on the entire list. So with that, once again, I've stopped using the word "fair," Mr. Weezer, since I got jaded as an elected official. Unfortunately, life isn't fair. But at the same time, there is a matter of respect and a matter of appreciation for people who are acting honorably. And once again, I'd like to thank you for acting honorably on many, many issues when it comes to budgeting and sacrificing, yet at the same time, I think it's appropriate for you to assert yourself at this moment and put forward that motion, and I would agree that we should agree to, as amended, with Mr. Weezer's motion.
Mr. Parks, then Mr. Weezer.
Mr. Cardenas, I appreciate your comments, but obviously, you've never seen my CRA areas. You've never seen my CRA areas, the least productive in the city of LA. So let me just say that, again, it's an issue that the LADOT has moved forward with a package. They are following the directives the council gave them on projects that are ready. We realize the contingency money is not dedicated. All we're saying is send Mr. Weezer's motion to committee, that we basically do not move forward with $507,000 for signage, and that we do not allocate the $817,000, but we allow LADOT to bring it back through committee with an assessment of projects that are currently available and ready, so that we will have the best ability to not have Measure R end up like Prop A and C that are overfunded and are in deficit for years to come. And that was why we crafted the policy for Measure R, our dealing with issues that are available at the time, to spend the money, see the project, and get it done. And if we get into banking money, get into multi-year types of situation, we are taking ourselves away from what Measure R is. So I'd ask that we send motion, again, that we send 8A to committee, and let the Transportation Committee resolve it, to move forward the rest of the report, so that we can get those projects that have been waiting for years to be funded.
Mr. Weezer.
Thank you. I ask that we instead continue this item for a week and allow the Chair of the Transportation Committee to give some input on this. He has had some overview over this, and I just want to ask, any of these projects, if we continue it a week, would that put any of these projects in danger? No? Okay. Colleagues, I've been seconded by Mr. Kukorian, and I appreciate the comments I've heard from Mr. Cardenas. I do believe that they are right on. There's been no process. We get this, and if it doesn't impact any of the other projects on there, I see no reason why we cannot fulfill a commitment, a verbal commitment at that, that was made for the downtown streetcar. At the same time, I further agree more with Mr. Cardenas, that politics has certainly jaded my judgment of fairness, and whether there is fairness in politics or not. But I'd like to motion that we continue it, allow the Chair of the Public, of the Transportation Committee, give some input on this, and be back here in a week to discuss this item, but that we continue it with the amendment to the original report, so that Mr. Rosenthal could see that amendment with the report.
Back to Mr. Parks.
Maria, will you tell us what the criteria for Measure R? How did we, the policy?
What the council approved about six months ago was primarily that it would not be for projects or for programs that were ongoing. It was primarily to construct projects with, real projects, on-the-ground projects, to fill deficits and things like that.
Thank you. And colleagues, I don't see a need to hold up the whole package. There's only two issues that are in discussion. Certainly, holding those for a week until you can make a decision is fine, but to hold up the whole package makes little sense, and I would ask that we move the package forward as amended. And also, I think, for clarity, we've heard about the promise that was made. I don't know who made that promise. It wasn't eight members of the council that made that promise. It may have been the mayor that made that promise. The mayor doesn't get to vote here. So the key is, who made the promise? Who made the commitment? And that's what we should be concerned about, because this council has voted consistently as to where it's going to place its money and set its policy. And so I would say that to hold up the other that have been waiting now for several years with no funding is a concern of mine. So I would ask that we move Item 8A to committee, and So I would ask that we move Item 8A to committee, and deal with those two isolated issues, and allow that committee report to go forward on those that are ready to go.
Back to Mr. Weezer.
Thank you. I just want to clear up the record, no, the mayor did not make that promise. I'll bring a videotape next week of the discussion that occurred when we discussed the Measure R funding local return, and I'll show everybody's heads nodding across the aisle from both places of this horseshoe, saying we will include the streetcar in the local return money and not put it on the ballot. So that's for the record. But colleagues, again, I asked that we continue this item, get better information from Mr. Rosenthal, allow staff to better look at all this and see if we can make some better sense of it. Thanks.
Mr. Cardenas, then Mr. Parks.
Once again, good arguments are made on many sides of what's been talked about at this moment, and urging of how we should vote in, hopefully, just a minute or so. But at the same time, I think it's important for us to understand that there is some value in having an opportunity of courtesy when a member of anybody asks for something where, as the staff, more experts than we are on these details, are basically telling us that to put this over for a week will not have any detrimental effect whatsoever on any of these projects in this motion. So I would like to defer to giving the Councilmember of the 14th District the deference of allowing this to be put over for a week, and for good and proper dialogue to occur in order for us to see this before us next week, and then we could actually act on it however we choose to as individuals and as a body. But to give him that courtesy, I think it's due to him on this particular matter. I see no overwhelming reason why we should not afford that to one of our colleagues. So I do agree with Mr. Weezer, I think he's being a lot more kind than I would be, putting this over for a week, I would try to force the vote, but it's not my move, it's his, and I support him on that. Once again, I think he's being a statesman about this, and I would support him in a vote to put this over for a week.
Mr. Parks.
Let me just make my final comments on the $10 million. I had a personal conversation with Mr. Weezer about that, and actually advised him not to give up his $10 million. I also had a personal conversation in the fact that we said Measure R local return would be a available source. It didn't say the project was going to get funded, it said it would be part of that process. And I think those are the issues that we need to make sure, because we said specifically, do not give up your money, who's made you the promise? And also, it could be a part of larger projects that Measure R could fund. It didn't say it was going to get funded. And I think that's what needs to be clarified.
Back to Mr. Weezer.
Let me correct history here. The $10 million was for a parking garage on Broadway, had nothing to do with a streetcar. Those $10 million that I gave up two, three years ago now, three years ago, were SPRF funds that had been dedicated to Council District 14. It was in the budget, written in the budget, that we returned to Council District 14 once the parking garage is ready to go. It was ready to go last year, and that commitment wasn't fulfilled. This was a totally separate conversation for local return money for the streetcar. It had nothing to do with that $10 million. I only bring that up now to say that, contrary to Cardenas' advice, I've been a good sport in allowing me not to disrupt the overall good of this Council, the overall good of this city, in giving up my funds at a time. For example, I did not fight the effort to put the streetcar in the overall ballot, because the advice was, let's not screw up this process, wait until the local return is available. So it's two separately, separate things. $10 million, $1 million for a streetcar, and that both occasions, Council District 14 is getting screwed, because we looked out for the greater good of the city at that time.
Call me once, you can blame me. Call me twice.
There is no one on the queue. So, Mr. Clerk.
The last motion made is the first one voted on, and that is the Weezer-Krikorian motion to continue the matter with the amendment one week to February 25th.
So the motion now is to continue for one week. How many motions do we have, Mr. Clerk?
There are three on the table right now.
All right, so that's the first of three. Open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes, 1 no.
Ms. Perry, I can't hear you. Ms. Perry, you show a no.
I didn't mean to press the no button.
Oh, you wanted to press yes?
I wasn't going to press any button, I was just sitting up there fooling around with the button.
All right, you want to be recorded as a yes?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, very well.
So that doesn't change the outcome, that's 11 ayes.
All right.
Well, that matter will be continued to next Friday.
Okay, very well. Next item, please.
Item 6, called special by Councilmember Hahn.
Ms. Hahn, number 6.
Thank you. Do we have cards on this item?
No, we don't.
Oh, okay.
We do?
Yes, we do. Because I do know we have...
Ms. Hahn, excuse me, there was a public hearing on, if you want to reopen it, we do have cards, but there was a public...
How many cards do we have on it? Five cards?
We have 1, 2, 3, 4...
How do you know?
8, 8 cards, Ms. Hahn.
Okay. If you don't mind, colleagues, I'd like to reopen the hearing, because I know some residents have come a long way today and have sat through, you know, two hours so far. And colleagues, we'll hear the, if you allow the public hearing to be open again, I would like to hear from the residents of the community. What we're doing today, colleagues, is we're giving permission to the Housing Authority along with CDD to issue an RFP to do a family assessment plan in Jordan Downs. And many of you probably have heard that we are about to embark on a fairly aggressive project, historical at Jordan Downs, to completely transform that public housing development to make it much more productive, a better quality of life, there's going to be some retail involved with it. It's really going to transform, we believe, the lives of the residents of Jordan Down. But what we want to do as a part of that, is this is not just about remodeling buildings. This is going to be about remodeling people's lives. And what this is going to do is to really work, to assess what the families in Jordan Downs really need for their quality of life to improve. Things like education, early childhood development, employment, workforce development, health and mental treatment and preventive care, gang prevention, crime prevention, public safety, ensuring a successful transition through counseling and coaching, linking family members to necessary programs, services, and other resources that help eliminate barriers to self-sufficiency. So this whole project is going to be more about just making Jordan Downs look better. This is about making the families of Jordan Downs live better, live healthier, live safer, and have a real secure future for their children. And I know we have today in the audience, we have the Jordan Downs Community Advisory Committee, we have the Jordan Downs Block Captains, we have the Motivated Mothers Club of Jordan Downs, we have the Jordan, here, the Motivated Mothers. We have the Jordan Downs Youth Action Squad, and we have the Watts Century Latino Organization here today. And this is a great show from this community, to be here today, to support, I believe, what we're about to embark on. And I appreciate you all coming down here, sitting here for two hours until this item came up. But I think this is a real positive step, as we move forward to not just transform buildings, but we really want to transform lives. And we want to transform the lives of your children, so that they do have a healthy and safe life, where they believe that they can be successful, they do not have to fear crime or gang violence, and this is a part of what we're doing here today. So the first step is to issue this RFP, so that we get a qualified vendor that will really understand how to begin assessing each and every family. Because one of the things that I've been very insistent on with the Jordan Downs redevelopment is that we do this family by family. That's what's important to me, is that every family be treated with dignity, with respect, and a real sense of what do they need to be healthier and happier, as we also transform the buildings of Jordan Downs. So with that, if you'll reopen the public comment, I'd love to hear from those who came down today.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. I'm going to call all the cards, and you can come on up to the front. First speaker is Arnold Sacks, followed by Arturo Ibada.
Except for no Arnold Sacks.
Martha Fausto. Is Arturo still here?
Yeah.
Arturo, okay.
A minute each is fine.
Okay, one minute each. Martha Fausto, Richard Alford, and LaTisia Martinez.
Two hours.
Okay, excuse me, we have to start his clock again. Hold on a second, Mr. Sacks. Hold on, so I can call the names. Mr. Ibada, Martha Fausto, Richard Alford, is Richard up here? Richard, is he still here? That's Richard Alford, and then LaTisia Martinez. Okay, great. All right, Mr. Sacks is first.
Yes, thank you. We don't want to waste any time. Yep. Just remember, the group, I'm glad this group is here to listen to and understand what happened in the Council. You overheard Councilman Parks say that his district is one of the poorest served when it comes to CRA fundings. I'm sure that this district, this area probably is overextended in its CRA funding. Remember, the city has $930 million in CRA funds, how much is making its way into your area? Also, just remember this, follow the money. It's tried and true, but follow the money. A lot of promises are always made, but follow the money. And you got to sit here for two hours, and now you're given one minute to discuss your concerns about what's going to happen in your living area. Make the most of your time, but remember, above all else, follow the money.
Thank you. Arturo Ibada.
Honorable Chair, honorable members of the Council. My name is Arturo Ibada, I'm a co-founder and executive director of the Watts Century Latino Organization, a community-based, serving South Los Angeles and the greater Watts community for almost 19 years. I'm here to respectfully encourage this Council to fully support this motion for an interagency agreement, so that the Public Housing Authority of the City of Los Angeles can administer these requests for proposals. As you know, this is part of the Jordan Downs Transformation Project, exposed brilliantly by our Councilwoman Janice Hahn. And we are very hopeful that this Jordan Downs Transformation Project will bring the necessary services and resources that our community pretty much needs, especially in times in which we have over 20% unemployment rate.
Thank you very much, sir. Martha Fausto.
I know, I know. I know, I know. Hi, hi. My name is Martha Fausto, and I'm a Jordan Down resident and a JDCSC member as a youth representative, and also in the Youth Action Squad. And I'm just here to say that I'm in support of the reorganization, and also for the social programs that can be provided for us. I mean, I really have been committed to the community, and I do want to see other families achieve and success. So on behalf of the youth that couldn't make it today, I say we're in support. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard, Richard Alford, and then LaTisia, is Richard gone? Richard is gone? Okay, then LaTisia Martinez.
Buenos dias, mi nombre es LaTisia Martinez. Soy un miembro representando la comunidad de Jordan Downs.
Señor, un momento.
Okay.
Ella ayuda usted.
Buenos dias, mi nombre es LaTisia Martinez.
Good morning, my name is LaTisia Martinez.
Soy un miembro representando la comunidad de Jordan Downs and Watts.
I am a member that represents the community in Jordan Downs and Watts.
Estamos aquí un grupo reunidos apoyando la reorganización de Jordan Downs.
We are a group here, and we are supporting the redevelopment of Jordan Downs.
Yo creo que trabajando juntos vamos a hacer la diferencia de nuestra comunidad.
I think that if we work together, we are going to make a difference in our community.
Donde no muy tarde todos los residentes vamos a poder decir con orgullo vivimos en Jordan Downs porque Watts sí vale la pena.
Where we, the residents, can say with pride, we live in Jordan Downs, it's worth it. Gracias.
Thank you very much. And that marks the end of our Speaker Cards. Ms. Hahn, did you want to say anything in conclusion?
No, I just want to thank those who came down here today to the City Hall to express your opinions, and it's important, colleagues, that we support this. We go forward with CDD and our Housing Authority issuing this request for a proposal for a vendor to meet with families one by one, and assess what everybody needs as we move forward, so that we can really have a healthy, happy community at Jordan Downs. Thank you very much.
Mr. Labonge?
I just wanted to, again, say, Ms. Hahn, thank you for your leadership, but thank you for the leadership of the women of Jordan Downs. It's so important to step up. And if you look at, in the history of California, many places, it's absolutely the women have made the greatest difference. Whether it is Janice, I know you're...
Strong girl.
There was a woman named Christine Sterling who saved historic Alvera Street. There were four women who saved a historic high school in Los Angeles. There's women who saved the cable cars in San Francisco. Women who engaged community and really believed in it. So you're led by a great woman, but I want to congratulate you for being here. And hopefully, Ms. Hahn, I hope if you have time, you could take him up to Tom Bradley Tower and see the history of Tom Bradley and the great work that he did here. Good job, Ms. Hahn, good job. Thank you, everybody from Jordan Downs.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. All right, with that, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Thank you.
Just to change the chairs, Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
Item 9, called special for cards.
Number 9, Mr. Sacks. Colleagues, we have just a couple items left on the agenda.
Yes, thank you. I might have read today's LA Times headline, "Communities Are Using Redevelopment Funds For Other Purposes Than So Stated By the Bylaws According to What They're Supposed To Be Used For." So I was wondering, based on these properties being tagged for REIT, that why couldn't redevelopment funds be made available to the owners of these properties to bring them up to the standards required by the city? I mean, you do have $930 million in redevelopment funds sitting around, why not use them to erase the blight in the neighborhoods that so desperately need assistance? I know. The people don't have the deep pockets like, oh, I don't know, the people on the football committee's blue ribbon commission. But that's another story. Thank you.
That item's before us, colleagues. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Next item, please.
Item 12, called special for cards.
Mr. Sacks, number 12, you fill out a card on number 12.
And then it left.
Put that up on the bulletin board, please, because I don't have my notes. Oh, yes, personal contract. Again, two things about this. A, does this contract include benefits, pension, payments, and the like, health benefits? You know, the public, a good portion of the public are not having available to them. And the source of these fundings, is this the same person who got, is this another staff hirer using furniture funds? They're using furniture funds, you know, the ones that you use to beautify portions of the districts that you rule over? Why not redevelopment funds? They're supposed to eliminate blight, and as I've mentioned a few times, that's $930 million. Use that to pay for salaries.
On that item, colleagues, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Mr. Clerk, next item.
Council has motions for posting a referral.
Post and refer.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Alacon requests to be excused to leave at 11:00 a.m. on April 13th for city business, that meets council policy.
That's approved.
Councilmember Perry requests to be excused April 26th and 27th, and to leave at 11:00 a.m. on May 18th for city business, that meets council policy.
That is approved. That is approved.
Councilmember Hahn requests to be excused to leave at 12:00 on March 9th and for the entire meetings of March 18th, 22nd, and April 29th for personal business, and I'll meet council policy.
That's approved.
And Councilmember Rosenthal requests to be excused to arrive at 11:00 a.m. 11:00 a.m. on March 25th for city business. That also meets council policy.
That's approved.
Justice Claire.
All right, colleagues, any announcements? Announcements on this day before the rain comes in? Mr. Labonge? Mr. Labonge, if you'll get a microphone, please. Hard to hear you from the aisle.
Mr. President, it's President's Day weekend, so I hope everyone takes time to look at the history of the great presidents of this country and learn of the history of this country, of the many, 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 many presidents who served us. And I think of the presidents who've been in these chambers. And I think Mr. Miller, I think it would be good, because I know, well, I know Mr. Reagan has been here. I know Mr. Clinton was in the mayor's hallway, not with Mayor Reardon, but in the hallway. But it would be good to find out that history, so maybe Project Histor could have that down. Mr. Carter has been in here, in the building. He has been in the building. So it's President's Day. Let's remember all our presidents.
Any other announcements, colleagues? Any adjourning motions? Mr. Weezer adjourning motions? Mr. Carrick adjourning motions? Please stand for adjourning motions. Mr. Weezer adjourning motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. And colleagues, today I would like to adjourn in the memory of Raoul and Debbie Escobedo, husband and wife of 35 years who died in their home in Woodya this past Friday, 11, in a tragic shooting. A couple known for their familial warmth, hospitality, and kindness, the Escobedos will be fondly remembered and remarkably missed by their surviving family, friends, and neighbors. Raoul and Debbie met in the early '70s, married soon after, and went on to have 3 children. Raoul was a Vietnam veteran, graduate of Cal Poly Pomona, and co-founder of Bioplanners Incorporated. They were later blessed by the birth of their 3 grandchildren. I'd like to give a little bit of information about each of them individually. Deborah was a dedicated and beloved wife, mother, grandmother, and first grade teacher with the El Rancho School District. She was born in Denver, Colorado, and raised in Pico Rivera. Deborah received her bachelor's degree from Cal State University of Los Angeles and went on to receive her master's degree. She taught in the El Rancho School District as a first grade teacher. She had a dedication to her students and taking her work as an opportunity to give back to the community in which she was raised. Raoul Mario Escobedo was born in downtown Los Angeles. He graduated from Cathedral High School in 1963 and received his Bachelor of Science from the California Polytechnic University. That year shortly after graduating, he was drafted by the United States Army to fight for our country in the Vietnam War. During his tour of duty, Raoul received 3 bronze medals for valor and 3 air medals. After returning from Vietnam and rejoining civilian life, he went on a cross-country journey and had many adventures. He then returned to his home in Southern California, where he joined other Cal Poly Pomona graduates to form Bioplanners Incorporated. Raoul worked with the city of Los Angeles Planning Department from 1970 to 1980, where he was instrumental in the development of the Bull Heights General Plan, as well as the unit supervisor of city planning for the Department of the Silver Lake, Echo Park, Northeast and West Lake Community Plans. As principal with Bioplanners, as well as a prime contractor, Raoul managed the planning analysis, strategies, and citizen participation program for the Rich Crash Downtown Revolization Plan, the East Side Neighborhood Revolization Study, the East Side Neighborhood Redevelopment Feasibility Study, and the Woodya Boulevard Architectural Survey and Design Guidelines. He was a principal planner on the Pico Lisa Urban Revolization Demonstration Project, White Memorial Medical Center Planning and Urban Design Study, and the Program EIR for the other lengthy East Side Redevelopment Project. More recently, he was a principal planner and urban designer for the Metro Gold Line East Side Transit Project in the city and county of Los Angeles, and was the urban and landscape designer for the current campus improvements of East Los Angeles College. With a calm manner about him and a sage-like demeanor, Raoul shared himself, his knowledge, and kindness with all who came to know him. With a sweet smell of smoke from his pipe, Raoul was known to relish in the beauty of life, nature, and the endless joy brought to him by his grandchildren. Respected, beloved, and admired by his family, friends, and colleagues alike, Raoul will always be loved and never forgotten. Their friends and family had the opportunity to express their love for the Escobedo family February 14, 2011 during a candlelight vigil held in their honor at Murphy Ranch Elementary School directly across from the Escobedo home. They are survived by their loving 2 daughters, Monica and Michelle, and 3 grandchildren. Among so many other great attributes, Debbie and Raoul will always be remembered for their immeasurable and unconditional love for their children. May they rest in peace.
Mr. Carrick.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to adjourn in memory of Richard Polacek, who passed away peacefully on February 14th after spending the last weeks of his life surrounded by family and friends. Dick Polacek served his country for 4 and 1/2 years in both the European and Pacific Theaters. His time in the Army was life-changing, and in recent weeks, he shared many of his wartime experiences. During nearly 45 years of practicing and teaching oral surgery in Los Angeles, Dick served as president of the Los Angeles Dental Society, was a clinical professor of oral surgery at UCLA and USC Dental Schools, and treated countless patients. His great joy was spending time with his family. I know a couple of his family members well, Joel and Elaine Polacek, both of whom were significant leaders in the West Hollywood business community, and Joel managed the Pacific Design Center for a number of years. He'll be missed by all who knew him, and a memorial service celebrating his 87 years of life is just concluded at Leo Beck Temple as we meet.
Thank you. Ms. Hahn.
I do have an adjourning motion. I would like us to adjourn today in the memory of Ernest Chavez, who passed away recently at the age of 70. Ernie was known to his friends and family as Big Ernie. He was born in Watts, he was raised in Wilmington, and he lived most of his life in San Pedro. So he was a real resident of the 15th Council District. He was a very proud and well-respected member of ILW Local 13 for over 37 years, and he was also a foreman with Local 94. He will always be remembered by his union family as the sergeant-at-arms at the casual dispatch halls. Some of his other jobs growing up and in his adulthood included being an usher at our Warner Grand Theater, a maintenance man at Marineland, and he was the owner of the former Don's Market in San Pedro. He survived by his 3 children, Diana Chavez, Laura Diana, and Ernie Chavez II, 2 brothers, Lou Chavez and Larry Chavez, and sister Vivian Palacios, 10 grandchildren, many close family members, nieces, nephews, and friends. He will always be remembered for his huge heart of gold and his ability to always make people happy. His celebration of life will be held today at the Dalmatian American Club in San Pedro from 3:00 p.m. until 11:00 p.m. tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Mr. Labonge?
Rachel Baum. For over 50 years, the wife of the great Alex Baum, our bike advisor. Rachel just passed with a struggle of illness. We ask that we all adjourn in her memory and be in thoughts and prayers for Alex as this charge of passing of her life. Ask for your adjourning member of Rachel Baum, the wonderful wife of Alex Baum, who is the wonderful inspirational bike advocate for all of this city, from Mayor Bradley to Mayor Reardon to Mayor Villarosa to Mayor Hahn.
All members on... Mr. Smith.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is not an adjourning motion, although it's a request for a prayer. You know, we had a city firefighter tragically injured yesterday. We all need to have him in our heart. I was notified by the fire department. He will probably not survive the afternoon, and so life support will probably be stopped, so...
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. This concludes our meeting. There is a city holiday on Monday. We will return to council on Tuesday of next week. Have a lovely weekend.